Being seven o'clock, I'll welcome all of you to the October 7th special town First, I'll ask everyone if you'd please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just by way of introduction, I will introduce on the stage, we have Town Council, we have two, Andrew Heap and Tony Riley. Followed, we have Kate Hodges, our Town Administrator, followed by Kelly Dolan, Assistant Town Administrator, the Select Board, Steve Carrigan, Jason Allison, and Ralph Gifford, and Amanda Ford, our Town Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I know that. Amanda Cannon. I will encourage everybody, if you are going to speak, please, as the article is made and the presentation is being made, we have a light crowd, so I would encourage you to get to the microphone, because at some point, somebody's going to make a motion to move the article, and if you want to be heard, I'd like you to be in line before that. Okay, so I think we're going to start. Article one.
And the vote taken under Article One of the May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting by adjusting the capital outlay plan to include the leasing payments for two fire vehicles, one mini pumper truck, and one Class A tanker trunk, trunk, truck, the cost of which shall be placed onto the town's debt schedule as outlined in the warrant, and where the first payment due shall be in fiscal year 2027.
This article Chief Moody is going to present.
Here, if they could just come down front, they'd be here just to help answer any questions that you may have. Lieutenant Gilchrist, Lieutenant Aldrich, and Lieutenant, where'd he go? One of the biggest challenges we as department heads faced is asking our residents for budgetary impactful purchases. So before getting to this point, we challenged our team to think outside the box. We asked them to be mindful of the financial impacts and to look at the department as a whole. We looked beyond simple replacement of an engine, took a comprehensive townwide approach. We asked one another to think about the application, the repairs, maintenance, equipment, day-to-day costs, but most importantly, we focused on service and response for our residents, improving our firefighter response times and equipment quality while increasing our capabilities, especially to our non-hydrant districts. What we came up with is a multi-equipment request that replaces, that represents more than trucks. It represents a plan, one that has the potential to save lives and property while minimizing the personnel necessary to safely and effectively respond to calls in all areas of town. What we're looking to replace is shown here up on the screen. It is a 1999 E1 Cyclone II rescue pumper. Over the last 14 years, Lancaster has spent $40,000 in keeping the truck in running order, and unfortunately, we have come to the point where any repairs made will not guarantee any extended useful, trustworthy life. The air system has developed a leak that continues to require higher RPMs to overcome the loss. It is just a matter of time before it is unable to maintain the pressure necessary. More recently, draft capabilities have failed during a training exercise, meaning this truck needs positive water pressure to fill the onboard tank. It can no longer suck water from a non-pressurized source, severely limiting its usefulness. We are asking for you to support implementing a two-truck replacement plan that costs less than the original engine replacement by approximately $50,000. The two trucks shown above represent a mini pumper. This truck is a condensed version of its bigger brother. It can store 300 gallons of water, 15 gallons of foam, allowing response to small-scale fires and holding the tools necessary to respond to motor vehicle accidents. Having four-by-four will allow safer operation in the winter weather, and its smaller size offers greater access to our fire roads with longer and greater access to the homes with long, narrow driveways. Its smaller design means lower maintenance costs and less manpower to safely operate. The Class A tanker, this engine will be a game changer for Lancaster. Having the ability to deliver 2,000 gallons of water with one truck to those who need it most, specifically our non-hydrant district, is the responsible approach. Setting this engine up as a Class A pumper, when combined with our existing apparatus, will strengthen our ISO rating, having the potential to lower insurance costs townwide. This engine can be operated with just a driver, reducing the manpower and increasing response. As mentioned, some of the highlights, this plan costs $50,000 less than the traditional engine replacement. It costs less in manpower, maintenance, and usage. This plan provides a higher level of townwide protection of life and property, and this is more than a request for trucks. It represents a carefully thought-out plan to serve the residents of Lancaster with the highest level of protection our department can provide. Thank you. I'll answer any questions.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on this article.
Two things. First of all, I'm Jane Syria, Bolton Road, Lancaster. I'm very disappointed in our Board of Selectment, Town Administrators, in regards to letting everybody know about this meeting, because if you don't get the item, you really don't know. You watch the meetings, but those are kind of hard to take. The board was up all weekend, and all it had was the horse shed fair. That's more important than getting people to a town meeting? That tells me you people don't want us here. That being said, I don't mind supporting one truck. We haven't brought businesses in yet. We just did an override. We're going to get hit with the school. I'd like to amend this to one vehicle, one pumper truck only. Thank you.
Next. Moving that, I would ask you to write that motion up. Well, I'm, I don't know how I can help you on that. Okay. Yes, next.
Regina Brown, 198 High Street Extension, speaking as a private citizen. I do support this. Working for the town as a dispatcher for 28 years, there has been fires that, without bringing in the pumpers and the tankers from other towns, especially Manny's, we saw two fires, actually three fires there. Without bringing in those pumpers and other equipment and relying on other people to help us, we never would have fought those fires, and we lost those barns. We need this equipment. I cannot say this enough. We need this equipment to make sure those areas of Lancaster that are not within easy water can get the equipment they need. Thank you.
Next.
Martha Moore, 131 Center Bridge Road, speaking as a private citizen. I am supportive of this article because I grew up in North Lancaster and know that an area where there's no town water is, a pumper and tanker are critical to firefighting. I've also been very involved late in the 40B development on Center Bridge Road, and the housing shortage is spurring development of 40B developer, you know, apartments, housing, etc. And there's a very high density, such as 13 Neck Road, that has 10 to 11 apartments being built on a half-acre lot. And this density of the buildings and the people takes away from the space where a big, normal-sized fire truck can operate, maybe, and the mini pumper might be a little bit better use for those types of development, which I'm sure they'll be more of coming down the pike. So as I said, I am definitely in favor of this article. I do have a point of clarification or a question. I believe at a recent town meeting, you know, May Town Meeting, the voters approved a $1.2 million purchase of a fire truck, and I'm not sure whether that was ever purchased, and if not, could some of those funds be used to help this out?
That is the plan. It is the replacement of that process that was last, last May. So it is to replace what is in our capital plan right now.
Okay, so there's no real increase in spending for this because, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Anne Ogilvy, 4 Turner Lane. Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Appreciate your presentation, and I am in favor of this article. I do have a question that you answered for me. I'm hoping you can answer it here, because I think there's probably a reason a lot of people came tonight to vote about this, because we do live in places without hydrants, and we are concerned about the town's capacity. I know that this vehicle won't get built overnight. It's not sitting on a lot waiting for us to authorize it. So my first question to you is, can you just explain to us what we're relying on in the meantime to fight fires in non-hydrant districts when we have a pumper truck that cannot draw from a cistern or pond or other water source?
Okay, so what we have is our Engine 2, which has 1,000 gallons of water onboard. That has fully operational pump. And so that would be our first primary piece to respond. That would get, again, 1,000 gallons of water on there. The second truck that would respond would be our Engine 4. That is the one that would give us 750 additional gallons, but then it would have to be removed from the scene. We would rely on mutual aid to bring tankers in from other areas at that point.
Okay. And can you talk about the mutual aid situation? So I know that gives us like 17, 50 gallons worth of water to fight a fire. You mentioned in a conversation that you and I had that we need at least 3,000 probably for a structured fire, and of course, more is always better. So can you talk about how the mutual aid works? Because even, even if we approve this, we have 12 to 18 months where we don't quite have what we need, it sounds like, here in town.
But as you said, more water is definitely going to be better, especially in a situation like that. So what we have started is auto aid. So based on the type of call, we would have our mutual aid partners, as long as they had the equipment available and the staffing able to get there, they would start rolling that equipment in our direction. But again, we're at the mercy of them. Part of this plan is to be self-sustaining for Lancaster, to be able to help Lancaster and to bring the tools and equipment, mostly water, to the areas that need it most.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other question is about the article as it is on the warrant. I didn't quite understand if we're going to be spending less than we authorized in the capital plan that we voted on. What does this article do? Does this article authorize the town to enter into a lease agreement on our behalf? And is this language sufficient to do that so that we don't have to come back in any number of months and vote on this again? That is my question.
I would ask that Kate Hodges can speak to that.
Yes, hi. This will allow us to send a certified vote to the makers of both trucks, which would then end up being a promissory note. What would happen in fiscal year 27 is we would pay the interest-only payment, which is about $115,000, and then every subsequent year thereafter, it would be in the budget. So by the time the fiscal year 28 payment is coming, there's two debt payments for fire vehicles coming off, and so it's basically a 12-cent difference, give or take, in the total amount for both trucks. So that would give us permission, and the lease that we would sign says that it's conditional on an appropriation at town meeting, but that appropriation is the budget, not this as a one-off standalone article.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we have confidence that this is the right way to do this. My last question, Commissioner Moody, is you explained to me this is actually a lesser appropriation than we had originally made in the budget?
So the original appropriation was 1.1. This ends up being, as current numbers right now, $50,000 less with all the necessary equipment put on the trucks.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the effort that went into this, and I do hope people will vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Syria.
I'm back. So I want to make an amendment to go to one truck and let the fire department choose which one they want. Until we bring businesses and stuff in, we're spending money ahead of time. We're just being crazy. In the two and a half, you're not going to get another one of those. So that's my amendment.
Okay. Before you leave, so it's a motion to amend?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Syria, I think Kate Hodges is going to give you a little assistance to get this in the right terminology. Okay, while that's going on, yes, sir.
I'm Donald Adams, 48 Old Hickory Road. Can you explain the finances a little more here as to what are the costs of these trucks? And why are we doing leasing? You know, when you go for a car, you're always told leasing is the most expensive way to buy the car. So what does that do for us, other than make it easier to budget and get through town meeting?
I would definitely defer to Administrator Hodges to answer that question.
Did you hear the question? Yes, sir. Did you probably didn't hear the question?
It's beneficial because it spreads the payment out over a period of seven different fiscal years, rather than having the upfront cost, which right now, we would either have to have inside the levy, or we would use almost the entirety of a free cash balance.
Do we have a truck at the end of fiscal '34?
As written, you would have two trucks.
Okay, and it's just, it's a little confusing. We have a mini truck, which costs more than the Class A tanker. That's, seems incongruous.
That is more technical than I know.
It seems incongruous. We have a smaller truck and...
It's based on the building process of the truck, as well as all the equipment put into it. So it's the time and materials to build it.
And do we have a list price on these trucks?
We do. I will tell you that in July, the list prices were $498,565 for the tanker. Since that time, that has risen to $554,865. The other quote that we had was $399,000. That was for the mini pumper. That has risen to $558,165. So the total is right around the 1.1 million.
Okay, so at the end of this, it's going to be almost $800,000 a truck, is that?
It'll be...
At the end of the lease with the interest and...
1.1.
Okay.
Is the total price.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Emily Taylor, 634 Main. My questions follow up on Dawn's. So just to clarify, this is a lease to own. At the end, we are free and clear.
Correct, we own it free and clear.
And then, in terms of repairs within this leasing period, are those covered? Like, what are we looking at in terms of our repair needs in the next 10 years, or seven years, I guess?
So I'll be honest, I don't know what the actual warranty information is. Typically with commercial equipment, it isn't like our standard three-year, 36, but it would be the same for any new piece of apparatus that we bought.
And then my second question is, and I also want to say thank you to the people who are here. Thanks for coming, guys, and thank you for your past service.
Emily, I'm actually getting clarification on some of the stuff. So for a point of clarification, mechanical and electrical are included for up to 150,000 miles, according to the agreement that we are hopefully going to sign.
No road trips. And then my second question was, what is the life expectancy of these two vehicles when properly maintained?
20 to 25 years. And in Lancaster fashion, that means we're going to go for 25 to 30.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Other discussion? Okay. Okay, so Ms. Syria, I'm going to recite what I think you and Ms. Hodges talked about, and you can correct me where I'm wrong. So it's a motion to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article One of the May 6, 2024 Town Meeting by adjusting the capital outlay plan to include the leasing of one fire vehicle. And you're suggesting that the fire department choose which one they opt for. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, that is the motion that is before the group. We do nothing until there's a second, so... Okay, discussion.
As I said in the presentation, this was a carefully thought-out plan. The best practice requires both of those trucks to be able to bring the water supply to the areas that need it most, so I would strongly, strongly urge that we stay with the original article.
Thank you.
Since the motion suggests that the fire department be part of the discussion on which truck, I would echo what the Commissioner said, that a lot of work went into this, and clearly, we heard from the fire department, the best way to provide fire services to all of our residents is by having both of the vehicles purchased at less than we authorized in May. So I would suggest a no vote on this amendment and a yes vote on the underlying motion.
Thank you.
Ryan Aldrich, 290 Neck Road. I just want to clarify that the mini pumper is meant to extend the life of Engine 2 by about five years. If we don't go with the mini and bolt these trucks together, we will be looking to replace Engine 2 within five years at least, and that could be anywhere from 1.2 to 1.4, the way things are going.
Thank you. Other discussion? Sure. If you would, come to the microphone. You don't have to announce who you are, we know.
Okay, I know there's something, the Finance Committee's not up there tonight. Could you tell me where the Finance Committee stands on this?
Do we have a report on Finance?
I can't, I won't speak for them, but at their last meeting, they went over all of the capital projects as they were outlined at a Select Board meeting, and they affirmatively moved all of them forward, with the exception of two that they wanted further discussion. So they did not take an official motion on that, because they're due to review the capital plan at the next Select Board meeting, but they were all supportive when they were discussing it.
Did somebody ask? Okay, well, this one was in line, so I'm going to acknowledge.
So Regina Brown, again, 198 High Street Extension. Again, working for this town as a dispatcher for years, when we had a fire, especially Manny's, to say we're going to call out of town sounds easy. It's not. You're waiting 20, 30 minutes. We had pumpers and tankers coming from Townsend, Pepperell, Groton... What? 22 towns, thank you. I dispatched it, yeah. It was crazy to get water. Water. You would think that's an easy thing. It's not. So if you have a house anywhere that is not in an immediate, easy water access, you're going to be in trouble. I'm telling you right now. And to wait that time, you're going to be in trouble. These guys can only do so much. They can show up with their trucks and their hoses. If you don't give them the right tools, you don't give a digger the right tool to shovel, you're going to be in trouble. And we have to, for your own safety, have the right equipment. Please pass this. Thank you.
All right, the question has been moved. Second on that. Was there a second to move the question?
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is a simple majority, so to move the question, then I'm going to move, vote on the amended article, and we'll go from there. So those in favor of stopping debate and moving the question, please raise your hand. Those wishing to continue debate, okay, seeing none, that is done. So now we're going to move to the amended article, and we've had discussion. Any other comments from anybody? Okay, in this, this is going to be a show of hands as well. We are going to have the vote on number one, three, and seven using the clickers. Now, I guess the most basic question, does everybody have a clicker? You should have. If you don't, please go to the, where you checked in and obtain one. So on the motion to amend to one fire truck, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, that clearly fails. There being under five in favor of amending. So now we're going to move to the article as presented, and Amanda, you let us know when you are ready. And this is going to be by clicker. Yes, the green button means yes, you are in favor of the article. The red button means no. Okay, please start voting now. Okay, please complete your voting in the next five seconds. Well, that's calculating. It appears we have about 94 voters here this evening. Okay, so the result is 88 in favor, six opposed out of 94, so that clearly passes. Mr. Gifford?
I move to amend the vote taken under Article Four of the May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting to appropriate the sum of $1,228,250 from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as outlined in the warrant.
Ms. Hodges.
Is Scott McDonald or a member of the DPW Commission present?
Are you all in favor of tabling number two? Anybody opposed? Unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the location of the safety plan by accepting and including the public safety plan, a copy of which may be reviewed in the warrant, which was accepted by the Select Board in accordance with Section 140-3 of the Personnel Bylaw during our September 4, 2024 meeting.
I'm sorry. So I move to...
We're in the middle of them.
Can we read an explanation of why we're tabling Article Two? Please.
They're not here to present.
But why do they need to be here to present? I'm sorry.
It's their article.
Okay, but it's on the warrant.
It's, right, but they're the sponsor. If you see, it says Article Two, amend Water Enterprise Fund, Board of Public Works.
Okay, so aren't we just amending the amount that was voted in May? So does that really need to be tabled? And what is the impact of it being tabled?
This body felt it needed to be tabled, but...
And was the impact?
What is the impact? It means it's not considered at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now back to three, Ms. Hodges.
Article three is to supplement classification plan for public safety. So as many of you know, the fire department was covered by a collective bargaining agreement overseen by the Teamsters. Last year, that unit decertified, and while wages outlined in their contract remained valid, the town needs to adopt a wage scale to cover the employees within the Fire and EMS Division of Public Safety. This table reflects wages for all levels within the fire operation, from firefighter EMTs to the deputy chief position. The data seen here was created after an eighteen-month-long process spearheaded by and through the Collins Center for Public Management, which is part of UMass Boston Schools of Government. The town applied for and received a grant to pay the Collins Center to study and update the town's entire classification and compensation schedules. The wages here reflect those of our comparative towns and factor in a forty-eight-hour schedule, which the full-time firefighters currently work. The full report from the Collins Center is available online in the Select Board materials, if anyone's interested in seeing it. To be clear, the adoption of this scale does not impact the FY twenty-five budget, our current budget. The town is not asking for additional funds, as they are not needed at this time. We're simply asking for town meetings' consideration of adopting the scale, which is consistent with our Personnel Bylaw. Again, there are no monetary changes to the current, as the total appropriation which was adopted at town meeting is sufficient.
Thank you. Discussion? I indicated this would be by the, using the clicker, so, Mandy, would you, when you're ready?
Yes. Please.
Good, okay, please commence voting now. Okay, please finish in the next five seconds. Okay, close voting. Results were eighty-five in favor, six opposed of the ninety-one votes that voted. Article four.
I move to accept MGL Chapter forty, fifty-seven, which permits the town to deny any application for, or revoke, or suspend any building permit and certain local licenses or permits for any person, corporation, or business enterprise who has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges, or for any activity, event, or other matter which is the subject of such license or permit, and which activity, event, or matter is carried out, exercised, or is to be carried out or exercised on or about real estate whose owner has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges, and to amend the general bylaws by adding a new Article Four to Chapter One entitled, quote, "Licenses or Permits of Delinquent Taxpayers," end quote, as outlined in the warrant.
Second. Okay, excuse me, Ms. Hodges.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, on October tenth, nineteen ninety, Article Four passed at town meeting adopting the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-seven. That general law allows for the denial of permits to those applicants who may have outstanding tax payments. Unfortunately, the town did not incorporate those provisions into the bylaw, and this article is presented as a means to rectify that oversight. As seen on the screen, passage of this article would amend our general bylaws of the town by creating a new section which is consistent with Mass. General Law.
Thank you. And according to the article, this was endorsed affirmative action by the Select Board and the Planning Board.
Yes.
Discussion?
Alexandra Turner, six twenty Main Street. I'm so old that I remember when this was passed, and I thought it was a good idea then, and I supported it, and I still do. My understanding is this was organized and is still, is still available, although it's difficult to find in Lancaster, in the section that says, "Other Acts and Amendments," or "Other Acts As Approved by the Voters of Lancaster," which we did in nineteen ninety, and it appears in that section. So I gather it needs another section, because in practice, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety. In fact, I know somebody who was not granted a license this summer because there was a snag in their payment, tax payment, and I know that has impacted the Hawthorne discussion, which the Hawthorne Lane discussion, or Hawthorne issue, which the Select Board are advancing later. So is what we have not sufficient? Or, I mean, obviously, we're trying to do it, but it sounds like we're recreating and putting it back in the same spot.
I think the explanation is clarifying or getting our bylaw in sync with the general law, but is that, is that correct?
Yes.
That is the answer. Yes, sir.
Larry Shore, seven fifty George Hill Road. I support Article Four, however, I have a question. In regards to development, I am concerned that while this is a useful tool, that it may be limited, and that is because a developer will typically create a unique LLC for each project that they plan. In a situation where a particular project is missing certain approvals or is subject to some concern, if that developer pursues a different project with a different LLC, are they still in a situation where it's possible to deny them a permit in that second case while they remain deficient with respect to the first? Thank you.
Good question.
You are correct. We can only go after the entity that owes the taxes. So if it is on the same property, that is one thing, the property that owes the taxes, but if a different LLC is created, that would be a loophole, correct?
Is there a way to close the loophole?
Not that we are aware of passing through the AG's office at this time.
Thank you.
Other discussion, please. Okay, this one, I'm gonna try going with a show of hands, just to expedite the meeting. So those in favor of Article Four as presented, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. Article five.
I move to authorize the Select Board to file a petition with the General Court to enact legislation which would repeal Chapter three fifteen of the Acts of two thousand and two, which established a Department of Finance and Budget in the town of Lancaster, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objective of the petition.
Second. Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This particular Act, Chapter three fifteen, was approved by the town in two thousand and two, and while I can't speak to the impetus behind its proposal today, almost twenty-three years later, there are certain sections of the Act which do not work in the town's favor, both from an organizational standpoint or an employer standpoint. I want to be clear what these revisions will not do. They will not change the appointing authority for the position from the Select Board. That will remain as a Select Board and appointed position. They will not affect the Finance Committee in any way. They will not limit or change the educational requirements or experience minimums required for someone to hold the position. They will not change any current reporting structures, or the manner in which the Finance Department is currently set up, and they will not affect the duties or responsibilities assigned to the Finance Director. What the changes will accomplish are a mixture of administrative and human resources-related. The proposed amendment include, includes the job title, and we want the job title to reflect what the town has always called the role, which is the Director of Finance within the Finance Department. There is no record of the town ever having a Director of Finance and Budget, nor is there a record of having a Department of Finance and Budget. And while the Finance Director is ultimately responsible for the budget's creation and management, the title written in this Act is not the current title we use or have ever used. There are also changes proposed to use the term "Select Board" rather than "Selectmen" and to change references made in the Act for him or he to they or their. But perhaps the two most important changes are the statutory requirements that the Finance Director must have a dual role and that that individual's position be covered by an employment contract. In terms of the dual role, the changes remove the requirement that Lancaster's Finance Director also be Lancaster's Town Accountant. That doesn't mean we can't have it, as we do now, and while the current Finance Director is both the department head and the town accountant, having that as an absolute, as a statutory requirement, severely limits the town's flexibility as an employer. There are no plans to change the dual role, but upon the current Director's retirement, which is coming soon, unfortunately, the town will need to recruit someone to replace her, and we need to be in the best position as an employer to do that. The town needs to have flexibility to shift when necessary. The ability for the town to consider having a Finance Director positioned separate from the Town Accountant is something which the current Director has advocated for for many years. This is not because she wants to change her position, but because as the town changes and the operations within local government change and retirements happen, reorganizations are customarily contemplated. What happens if one day Lancaster wishes to contemplate a different organizational structure? What if the Select Board and the Finance Committee believe that the Collector/Treasurer is the best person to be the Finance Director? What if it's someone else entirely? Nothing can be explored if that is a requirement, that the role be a dual role. Lastly, the current structure lists the Finance Director as a contracted employee. This severely limits the town's ability to attract and retain qualified applicants, because quite frankly, contracted employees often do not have the same protections as those covered under the bylaw. When I began working in town and spoke to many of the employees about what they liked and what they didn't like, the matter of job security and satisfaction came to the top of the list of concern. People felt that not knowing if they would have a job every few years when their contracts were up was stressful and detracted from the position. It is also not commonplace in municipal government to have several separate employment contracts, as many communities like Lancaster have instituted a Personnel Bylaw and union contracts through their own darn charges, and in this case, our town code. The town adopted its Personnel Bylaw about a year and a half ago, and that bylaw covers employees under the Select Board. Staff get certain cause protections, and they streamline employee benefits, meaning everyone has the same number of holidays, the same amount of personal time, and the same access to healthcare and retirement contributions. This has created a greater sense of fairness and helps employees to feel secure in their jobs. Cheryl Greppi, who is the town's Finance Director, has written a statement relative to this article, which she has asked for Jason Allison to read, as she is unavailable to attend tonight's meeting.
Cheryl Greppi's message, Article five and six. I have suggested for the last five years that the town should relook at the Director of Budget and Finance position, especially as there would be several retirements transitions in the coming years. I personally hate to see the Finance Director tied to one specific position, thereby tying the town's hands. However, in the Special Act of two thousand and two, the Finance Director is written as someone who must be the Town Accountant. The problem I see is not all accountants want to be Finance Directors. Lancaster has grown so much over the last eighteen years, and more recently, the demands on the Director position have increased quite disproportionately to any one person's ability to keep up. Anyone who takes a leadership toll in town wants to offer residents the types of services they truly want and deserve. Only by changing the Special Act could the town contemplate an actual choice based on personality, skill level, and the town's needs. Should the Town Accountant be the Finance Director? Should the Treasurer/Collector or the Assistant TA be the Finance Director? Is there another scenario not yet contemplated? The town could have an incredible applicant for the Treasurer/Collector position, and perhaps it is thought that person would also make an outstanding Finance Director. But the way the Act is written, the town may only designate the Town Accountant to be the Director of Finance. I believe the first step is to remove the Special Act, so the town is not obligated to make that choice. These changes afford the town the opportunity to determine how best to structure positions at the time of the position's vacancy, and while considering what the town is facing at that point and what the internal and external candidate pools are like. I would also encourage the town to take the next steps toward a town charter, which will then allow a Finance Director to be standalone position combined with other positions and with the authorities and responsibilities made clear. Over the years, there have been tensions around budget preparation responsibilities, which underscored the town's lack of codified roles and processes. Some are in the town bylaws, such as the Director's broad authority to coordinate financial information and the Finance Committee's right to access budget materials. However, there is no codification for a detailed budget process, no assignments for specific tasks, and no designation of authorities, responsibilities, or milestones that dictate the many phases of the budget process within a fiscal calendar. The absence of this level of specificity continues to fuel conflict around budgetary control and responsibility within the different town entities. A perfect example of this is clearly seen when separately elected boards are charged with managing their budgets and do so very differently. Despite the ambiguity of the bylaws, the town administrator took the initiative three years ago to start implementing a more formal budget process and to solidify the internal order and responsibilities for each of the staff. This culminated in a comprehensive budget document, which was first seen in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. The document aligns with many of DLS best practices regarding budget processes and helped to define my role as a Director more clearly, which has led to increased efficiencies between the toll of the TA and mine as Finance Director. It is a very clear balance, but once we are gone, who will know what to do and when to do it? Is the process redone with each new hire? That is not only unsustainable, it also jeopardizes the legitimacy and professionalism that the past three years of work undertaken by the town administrator and I have seen. I don't want to see the town move backwards and would appreciate your support of the edits presented this evening. I believe they are not only in the best interest of Lancaster, but also work to conform with the best practices and ensure continued professionalism and growth in the Finance Department operations townwide. Thank you. And as noted, Mr. Moderator, the Select Board voted affirmative action on this.
Thank you. Discussion?
Hi, Emily Taylor, six thirty-four Main. I'm curious, if these two positions are split, do they equal one FTE, or what would be looking at if they were split? Thanks.
So the town, oh, sorry, the town is required to have a Town Accountant, we are not required to have a Finance Director. So if we ever went to only having one FTE, it would be a Town Accountant versus a Finance Director, which for many years is how it operated with every finance role being a different division, but not one department head. So I would say for the foreseeable future, someone that is a division manager in the finance divisions would be, in addition to whatever their role is, also the Director of Finance. So, and right now, it's only ever been one. I think the plan is to keep them as one. The question is, is there another entity that may wanna be a Finance Director, or should it only remain with the Town Accountant?
Yes.
Martha Moore, one thirty-one, Center Bridge Road. And just a clarification question, I guess. When looking at this and kind of doing a little research in the bylaws, I noted that oftentimes, they refer to a Personnel Board, which was voted on and supposedly put in place, but I wasn't sure whether that really actually existed, and the Personnel Board would have, you know, helped to clarify these types of issues.
Thank you.
So the town has on the books that there is a Personnel Board, one has not been seated for many years. There's also several other provisions in the town code that are similar to that. I think it's a matter for the Select Board to probably take up, whether they want to reinstitute that, but right now, we don't, we don't have a seated one and haven't for some time.
Yes, sir.
Joe Duramo, one twenty-seven Harvard Road. Is asking a question for Kate regarding some things that you said would not change with this, and one of them was that the position would still be appointed by the Select Board. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. The Select Board is the appointing authority.
Okay, in the.
Or their designee.
In the warrant article, under Section two, second sentence says, striking the words, "by the Board of Selectmen for a term of three years." That was the appointing piece, and instead, or in place of that, you'd have, in a manner consistent with the town's Personnel Bylaw, which I really don't know what, you know, what's.
Yep, the Personnel Bylaw lists the Select Board as the appointing authority, and the Select Board as step three in the grievance and arbitration. So they would be the persons to hire, to hire somebody, or their designee, and then the person to hear any grievances that come forward.
Okay. So when I went up to the town clerk's site to look at the Personnel Bylaw, Section one forty, it doesn't say any of what you just told me. Maybe there's old language that's still out there?
Nope, so the Personnel Bylaw refers to.
So, the Personnel Bylaw refers to another document, which are the Policies and Procedures. It's about 157 pages, and that has all of the different steps that are, that are in it. So, the Board is constantly kind of looking at that and updating it. The Personnel Bylaw refers to these policies.
Has, has that Policies and Procedures document been approved by the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. Yeah. Actually, on several occasions, because there's edits here and there as things come in, like we had to add a Fire Department section because they decertified from the Union.
Okay. And is that document available on the town website?
Yes, it is. If, there's a Human Resources tab, and it, and it's there. It was actually just updated on the 7th of August of this year by the Select Board, so it would also be in their packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Regina Brown, 198 High Street Extension. Just a question. In comparison, Article 5 to our neighboring bedroom towns, so not a Clinton Sterling, but a bedroom town with limited industry, how do we compare on this position? Like, would a Bolton have this position? Would a Harvard have this position?
Yes. They both have Finance Director positions. Their Town Accountant is a part-time position in one of them. They kind of go through that on the study. I can't do it.
So, their accountant, which, we have an accountant right now, that goes to part-time?
No. Our accountant is our Finance Director.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy Hughes, 85, wrote 11. I have a question about the necessity of the phrase "the designee," why that's there and why the Select Board wouldn't be the people that do the hiring. Is there an example of why that would be necessary? And who is that designee?
So, sorry, I can't see you behind the podium, but it's me. Hi. That it is a common phrase that the Select Board and other boards use when doing a number of different items. It's us or our designee. Should we choose to designate the Town Administrator to sign a contract on our behalf, or frankly, do some hiring and deal with the HR aspects of running the town? And so, in most hiring HR aspects, the, although the Select Board reserves the right to insert itself, their designee would be the Town Administrator, and we vote that.
Right. Just to clarify, and the Procurement Officer is who in our town?
The Town Administrator.
So, is it prudent to have the Town Administrator hiring somebody? I'm just thinking of Division of Labor and also knowing that there are issues, not in our town thankfully, but other places where there's concerns about, you know, I guess, would I be worried as a citizen of fraud, having the same person who's the Procurement Officer hiring the person who's the Finance Director, you know, paying the bills and somebody's writing the checks? Those are just worries I'd have.
And a perfectly valid concern. I can speak to my experience running a health center where our Chief Financial Officer hires both the Procurement Officer and the Finance Director. I don't, I don't feel that there's a conflict there at all. If, certainly if we did, we would deal with it as a board, but we do not believe there's conflict.
Yeah, we have some other checks and balances, too. We get audited, and there are signing the, what do we sign every Tuesday?
The warrants.
Warrants. So, there are a number of different checks and balances.
We do review all the expenditures, and we sign off on them.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russ Williston for Highfield Drive. So, I'm just in, it was just mentioned that the Town Administrator is the Chief Procurement Officer, but Section 3, that's one of the sections that's about to be struck, says that the Finance Director shall be the Chief Procurement Officer for the Town of Lancaster. I go. Oh, sure. Yeah, okay.
So, for many years, I believe that was the case, until Chapter 30B required that a Chief Procurement Officer have an MCPPO certification. So, that is a municipal and a commercial purchasing agent. It's a 47 to 48-hour class and an exam that you have to take and then retake every three years. And so, when hiring for the Town Administrator position upon the retirement of the former Town Administrator, or I'm sorry, the resignation, that was put into something that was required for the job. But it doesn't have to remain that way. It can go back to the Finance Director or somebody else, as long as they have the designation.
Kate, Mr. Moderator, may I? So, one issue with this, and you bring it up, is one of the challenges of Special Acts. So, Special Acts go on top of MGL, but MGL will always supersede Special Acts, if I have that right. So, having all of these extra layers really makes things complicated. One of the reasons we're talking about a town charter, that's why it was mentioned, and Cheryl's, it's kind of codify all of that together into a single place, so we don't have all of these different places we have to go find the laws for Lancaster. Thank you.
Yeah, no, just to clarify, Jason, there's a process where the, the Chief Procurement Officer chooses another Chief Procurement Officer. They're, they're in charge of filing that form. So, I mean, on top of that...
I didn't hear. Could you say what they're in charge of again? Sorry.
They fill out a form that they send to the DLS to, to appoint a different Chief Procurement Officer. This is all part of the process. Section 6, that's about to be struck, reads, "The Department of Finance and Budget shall report to the Board of Selectmen." And I think at the beginning, we were told that this wouldn't have any impact on the reporting structure, and it definitely does. When this was approved in 2002, it actually, it went to a town vote, and 2,409 people voted in that election. 1,519 voted yes for this Special Act that was recommended to the town to create an independent Department of Finance and Budget. 498 voted against it. That's a 75% approval for this, and we're going to ask 91 people to edit it. And the way that this Special Act is written, it won't come back for another town vote. It'll take effect when the legislature approves it. So, we also, in our bylaws, have a section for special town meetings that says, "It shall be the practice of the Town of Lancaster to address major issues at the annual town meeting." And we only have 91 people here tonight, and I think that's a reason that that is in our bylaws. I'd like to move that we table this question to take it up at the annual town meeting in May instead, so that everyone can weigh in on this and maybe have some questions. I think it was only covered in a, a less than two-minute section at the last Select Board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on, on tabling.
Just to make the first comment, since I made the motion, it's, it's for all the reasons that I just mentioned, that there's just not enough people to weigh in tonight on something that, really, a quarter of the town voted on initially in 2002. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I think, because I don't fully understand...
Ann Shum.
Oh, sorry. Carl Fawcett, 472 Harvard Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think because we don't fully understand the ramifications of this, I think I agree of tabling it to the May, May meeting, where we'd have more people and also more time to figure out what these changes would do.
Thank you. Mr. Allison.
Yeah, I, as a, as a Select Board member, I can completely understand the fear of not wanting to vote on something that could impact the town. But at the same time, it's really important that we don't wait till the last minute to have conversations that are going to put out votes by months. So, I, I see both sides of this. But, but I will say that I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope to us to decide when we can vote on articles based on attendance. Now, I get it, there's 90-ish people here, there's thousands of others, but the reality is, you know, we, we need to make progress on these things, and, and if folks believe that this is something that warrants more time, I, I do appreciate to bring that forward to the Board as, as we, as the warrant article opens and as we have those discussions. It's, it's a challenge to defer on the night of the meeting because we believe that there are not enough attendants. However, this is democracy, and we will vote on that now. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Moderator. I would just echo that we have, we did discuss this in detail at the Select Board level, both prior to voting to approve it on the warrant, then to put it on the warrant. This has been discussed many times. This is something that puts us into compliance, allows us to build a structure that makes sense for the town and makes us more compliant. I would urge folks to vote against tabling this and vote for the underlying article.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there. Justin Smith, 4 Turner Lane. I was curious if the Finance Committee has an opinion on this. It seems like that, given it has such a significant ramifications, that maybe we could hear from the Finance Committee about what their feelings are.
Yeah. So, the Finance Committee is unable to be here tonight for varying different reasons, but we discussed this at the last two meetings, and they were in favor of it. They had a pretty detailed discussion with the Finance, the current Finance Director about it.
Okay. It just seems like for something that is, you know, has such a significant impact on them, that it would be nice to have them here to be able to answer questions and, and understand more from their perspective. I mean, it's, I appreciate your, your relaying their, their...
I understand.
Opinions, but it would be nice to hear directly from them, so that we could, we could ask those questions. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I guess the only thing I would say is, I think the significant impact is sort of subjective. I think when it was discussed, it wasn't discussed as something that was thought of as a significant impact at the Finance Committee level and at the Select Board level. Unfortunately, a lot of what is in the Special Act is not currently happening, so I think we're just trying to be as compliant as we can.
No, I, I get that. I was certainly, I think we should be compliant. I guess perhaps the fact that the Finance Committee couldn't be here is sort of reflective of the idea that maybe a special meeting isn't really the place to vote on this. So, I, I approve, or I definitely support tabling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would, I would point, just point out, in fairness, the members of the Finance Committee, for reasons related to health and others, can't be here. It's not that they didn't want to be here. They have opined on this at two separate occasions in public meetings that are available, for folks to have either watched at the time or viewed prior to this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Russ Williston for Highfield. I mean, just to share, I mean, it really was only discussed at the last Select Board meeting, really for less than two minutes. I brought it up and looked at the timer. There was no opportunity for questions on this one. The, the Finance Committee hasn't weighed in, and just to illustrate, I mean, I printed out the Special Act to get an idea of what's actually changing, because some of the changes aren't listed in the article there. It just says that the sections are being struck. The, it's a four-page document when I printed out, and the red line document is almost all red lines. Second page two is all red lines, so I'd be happy to share this out afterwards, but I think that the town needs more time to talk about this before we vote. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, to clarify, the Finance Committee has had a chance to opine on it, and they did, two different occasions.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Alexandra Turner, 620 Main Street. I would urge voters here to support the motion to table this article. I was a Selectman at the time in 2002, and this Act was the product of a very extensive, in-depth study done by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, to establish best practices. We felt it was necessary at the time, because the reason there were so many voters wasn't because we were so popular, it was because we were facing a previous, very large override. And in order to gain the trust of the voters, we agreed to establish this. The Division of Responsibility, Checks and Balances, between a Finance Committee, a Selectman, the Town Administrator, and the Finance Director were there. Now, I agree with some of the statements that we haven't been doing what we should have been doing, but that would be, for me, a call to do what we should be, have been doing that is laid out here. And, you know, I am, I'm partly responsible for that, too, but I believe that this is a very weighty subject, and I would like to study it more. I'm sure there's some good changes to be made, but not without this, our legislature understanding what they're voting on.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would just clarify that the DLS that recommended it in '02 has recommended that we strike it now. So, I just want to be very clear on that.
Yes.
Hi, Anne Ogilvy for Turner Lane. I, I guess I just have a, a comment about the procedures for this meeting, and I, I understand that there might be many reasons why the Finance Committee cannot be here tonight, but I do note what has already been mentioned, which is that special town meetings are, are not supposed to be places where we do a lot of heavy business. They're supposed to be things that have to happen very quickly to get us through the rest of the year, and so to have serious articles like this on the warrant and no opinion, you may say that they discussed it at multiple meetings, as the Town Administrator and Steve Kerrigan have said, but they did not vote on this, nor has that vote been provided for us in the warrant, which has been typical of procedures by the town so far. And so, to have no opinions from the Finance Committee on anything in this warrant, lots of which has financial implications, is problematic. Maybe it points to a timing issue, that some of this was rushed through, and there wasn't time enough for the right meetings to take place to get formal opinions that the people who bothered to be here tonight can use to make their decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, on the question of, on the question of the, Mr. Moderator, the question of the, when things got scheduled for a special versus the annual, as the Town Administrator mentioned in her comments, there's an anticipated retirement for this position, which is why precipitated putting it on the special town meeting warrant and not waiting until the annual town meeting. And we did not believe, following DLS, as many people encouraged us to do many times, we did not believe it would be a controversial issue. We thought it was something we were coming into compliance, so we brought it to a special town meeting because we wanted to make sure we met the timeline of an impending retirement.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Donald Adams, 48, Hickory Road. You know, looking at Section 3 of this article, you, you repeal six sections of the, the Acts, and, and none of that text appears here. So, you know, for some of us, you're seeing this at town meeting, we really don't know what we're voting on here. We'll repeal, you know, 1 through 6, and, and you don't know what, what those are. So, you know, I, I can't support this with, without seeing more about that and, and the impact of those sections, and I would encourage us to table the motion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Voeck, John Voeckman, Main Street, in favor of moving the motion to vote, but I just want to say, we couldn't, we tabled the Public Works discussion because Public Works wasn't here, but yet we're screwing around, talking about something that the Finance Committee isn't here. Seems that we need to end it now. Please, the vote.
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, this, this article is sponsored by the Select Board, which is why we're moving forward, because we're here to talk about it. The reason why we tabled or accepted the motion to table was because the Board of Public Works sponsored Article 2. So, to be clear, the sponsor of this article is here, sponsor of that was not, hence the motion to table.
Mr. Moderator, I'll just, I'll add one more comment. I'm not going to speak for my, my Select Board colleagues here, but there's nothing more that we want, is to make sure everyone is educated for every vote that comes up. And, and if you approach, if you approach any of these meetings, any of them, and you need more information or want more information, we want to give it to you. It's just, it's a challenge to give you things we can't give you on the moment of a vote. So, if you want, you know, if there are things that you desire or need to feel comfortable voting, I support it, and we want to be able to give it to you. It's just a challenge to not know these things as we're approaching the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I did ask our Town Clerk if she could queue up this as a, a special vote, and she indicated yes, she can. Correct, Mandy? Okay. And this does require two-thirds vote to table. So, let me know when you're ready to vote, and we'll commence. So, if a vote in favor, a yes vote would be to table it, the no vote would be the red button saying, no, you don't, do not want to table the article. And we are ready to vote now. We very quickly got to 90 votes, so I'm going to say the next five seconds, if you'd make any final voting. Okay, we'll close voting now.
Okay, we'll close voting now. So there are 90 votes cast, 63 in favor. So that is a 70% vote in favor of tabling the article. So Article 5 is now tabled. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I'm considering... Stand by.
I'm sorry?
One moment. Regina, hold on a second.
Okay.
Hold one second.
Mr. Moderator, I move we table Article 6.
All in favor of tabling Article 6? Pardon? Somebody, I heard a second, so. Okay, I've heard four seconds now. So all those in favor of tabling Article 6, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Article 6 is tabled. Now we move to Article 7. This will be a 2/3 vote.
Mr. Moderator, could I make a motion to move back to Article 2?
Regina, I'm totally with you on it because I see Doug is here. Can we do Article 7 next? And then we will, it would be a motion to take Article 2 off the table.
I would like to make a motion to move Article 2 forward.
So the motion would be to take it off the table, but I'm just asking you if we can take Article 7, because we got that teed up. We'll do that, and then we'll call on you for a motion to take Article 2 off the table and consider it.
Thank you.
Article 7. And as I said earlier, this would be a 2/3 vote. And as I said earlier, this will be a vote using the clicker.
So I move the town accept and lay out Hawthorne Lane as a public way to acquire certain real property interests in certain lands along Hawthorne Lane as outlined in the warrant.
Discussion. Good evening. Again. Oh, Kate, you had a presentation? Okay, so hold just a second, please, Larry.
Just a background. So for those of you who are in the audience at May town meeting, Article 19 was a citizen's petition which brought, was brought forth to the voters asking them to accept Hawthorne Lane as a public way. And while town meeting voted yes relative to that, with 91 yes votes and 58 no votes, the evenings, that way the layout of town road is not a legal means to do that. So with an affirmative vote provided, the Select Board then took it to understand that the town was open to the road being made a public way and took the appropriate steps last May to properly lay out the roadway. They had a public hearing. They asked the Planning Board for their thoughts on the matter, and then they devised the warrant article. So this evening's vote is to allow for the acceptance of the roadway by the board and to accept a drainage easement within Lot 10 over the open space in undeveloped parcel, and then another easement over the open space from a different owner. The acceptance of the roadway importantly assures that the residents living at Hawthorne Lane have their roadway maintained in a safe and passable manner like the other ones in town.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Larry Shore, 750 George Hill Road. In view of what Ms. Hodges has just described, I ask the question of whether or not subsection 4 of Article 7 is something that we will be voting on this evening.
Is it, if I correct it, Larry, Mr. Shore is asking is Paragraph 4 of Article 7, which says to accept by purchase gift eminent domain? Am I correct, Larry?
Yes.
If that is being voted on as part of this vote.
Yes. In my comments to Jermaine, the flexible development subdivision plan, when approved, required that the open space be put under perpetual conservation or agricultural restriction. It was also to be managed either by the Homeowners Association or given to the town of Lancaster with the expectation that it would be overseen by the Conservation Commission. Section 4 describes the acceptance by purchase gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, this open space land. Why is it that land that was supposed to be given to the town of Lancaster must now perhaps be purchased or payment required for eminent domain taking?
So, I'm sorry, I just yelled into that microphone. My apologies. I have the worst seat in the house, sorry, Larry. So what we're doing tonight is accepting the land, if you approve. And it has changed since the initial concept, because it was originally envisioned to be entirely open space. Now there is a pump house in it. So there are different issues. You're well aware, as in a butter. And so the process will be that if this vote is affirmative tonight, we'll take the steps, make sure everything's all set. And then the conservation piece will be conveyed at an appropriate time to Conservation Commission.
But specifically, my question is, why must the town use funds to purchase or accept by eminent domain land that was supposed to be given to the town? As far as I'm aware, there was no expectation that the town would ever have to purchase this land.
So this does not envision an appropriation? That's just standard language. So there's no appropriation language? There's no, we're not appropriating any funds to purchase the land?
Okay, so we are not committing the town to potentially make a purchase of the land?
No, we're not.
Thank you.
No, thank you, it's a very good question.
Other debate?
Hi, Ann Ogilvy.
Sorry, Ann, the town, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Perhaps you can turn the microphone toward you.
Yeah, I don't want to touch this. Perhaps somebody that won't break it could do that.
Mr. Moderator, while we're doing that, I will point out that the Select Board recommends affirmative action.
We just seem tall.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I ask a question? Hi, Ann Ogilvy, 4 Turner Lane. Two, three questions. One question is, what is the annual cost, estimated cost of adding this to the town road roster? Many of us actually live on private roads that we do pay to plow ourselves. So we know there's a cost to that. So what's, how much is this going to cost the town? And then I'd like to know what the Finance Committee vote on this was. And I believe there's also a Planning Board vote on this. And the results of any other votes that are pertinent to this discussion would be helpful for people to know.
Thank you.
As the Town Administrator said, we did have conversations with Finance and Planning Board. She is right there and stepped up to speak to our Board of Public Works. So I'm sure she'll be able to give you more thoughtful answers than my vamping until she gets to the stage. But we, rest assured, at least, in working with the Planning Board, all of these conversations took place.
Ann, if you could just repeat it so that I don't paraphrase.
I think it was what the costs were.
Yeah, I just want to know what the annual estimated cost of adding this road to the town budget is. And then also what the formal votes of the Finance Committee and the Planning Board were on accepting this road.
Okay. I don't believe there was a formal vote by the Finance Committee, nor I think would there be ever, usually with town roads. And I don't know the answer, although I can tell you in my brief conversations with the superintendent, he said that the road was quite small and that the cost would be negligible, unless, of course, there was a major issue, which, you know, would be covered under maybe insurance or something different than that. The chairman of the DPW Commission is here, so he might know better. But he went up and looked at it and didn't think it was anything significant for the roadway. And what was the other one? And of the Planning Board? The Planning Board issued a letter. I don't believe there was a, I'm looking right at Mr. Streeter, who is the chair. I don't know if you all took a vote or...
Could you possibly come forward so that everyone can hear you?
Thank you.
The Planning Board did not issue a formal report. We did issue a letter discussing best practices for this acceptance based on a report from prior town council that stressed the need for good title.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
George France, 13 Highfield Drive. Speaking as a private citizen, I think the issue of developer-constructed roads later being brought to the town for acceptance is a really thorny issue. And it's been dealt with somewhat by the Planning Board. We've discussed it and so on. But here's the crux. If the developer puts together a road that is not up to town specifications, then it can't be accepted. So if they're appearing before the Planning Board, we advise them that the road has to be constructed specifically to town specifications in order that it could be accepted. But they should be accepted. I believe that to have some roads that are not accepted and some roads that are leads to the inevitable situation where people are dissatisfied, the developer has walked away and no longer maintains the road. So the town is fraught. What I think we should do is simply require that roads be developed according to the appropriate specification by the developer and given to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Yes.
Susan Sussman, Nicholas Drive, 64 Nicholas Drive. So I live on a street that this body voted to accept as a private way. And I was personally really happy that that happened. But I don't understand the process. Like, how did we get here that we're constantly having to vote on whether or not to accept the care and maintenance of roads not built by the town? The town probably can't afford to build all these roads anyway. But like, I just don't understand the process. This is just a question. You know, and then there's, okay, this is up to spec. There were specifications. And I am presuming that this would not, we would not be voting on this this evening if this wasn't an area that was determined to have met all of those specifications. But there are a few little, oh, yeah, proviso. We have to do something on this lot, and we have to do something on that lot. I don't understand why in the planning process or in the proposals that people present to the town when they decide they're going to try to build something, like, how does it get this far? And it's still not exactly up to spec? That's my question.
So are you asking the Planning Board if it has been...
Well, I don't know. Is it the Planning Board? I don't know.
So, Mr. Moderator, I can say, it's a good question, one that many of us asked in some version of the last couple of years. We're in this circumstance, not due to anyone who's on the Planning Board now, not anyone who's on the Select Board now. We're just trying to help fix a problem. And I think George's comments about how the Planning Board addresses moving forward is to make sure that even if you're building a private development, that you're up to code and have the right specs, is the right direction to go in. We're just trying to help address a circumstance that exists on Hawthorne Road, where folks bought homes, allowed them to get built, had their occupancy certificates given, and were led to believe one thing by one person, another believing another. We're just trying to fix a problem that exists for a lot of residents who, through no fault of their own, live on a road that they want to make sure it gets plowed. They want to make sure it's available for emergency services, things like that. And so that's, we agree with you. This is, my hope is that we don't arrive in this spot again because we have taken the right steps with all future developments so that we don't have these problems. But this was a mess from the beginning, and we're doing everything we can to address it for the residents of Hawthorne Lane.
Mr. Moderator, if I may add, so four years ago, this was the first pile that I stepped into on the Select Board. And...
Not the last.
You know, this is no fault of the residents. And the reality is, is that the people who were involved in the decision-making staff are no longer here, none of them. So, you know, we are, as Steve said, we're just trying to right a wrong. And there are residents who are concerned about being able to get ambulances and fire trucks and safely get up and down the road with an expectation that this was supposed to have happened years ago, to your point. So it is really just about trying to, you know, close the loop on something that should have happened already. Thank you.
I appreciate the comments from both of you. I raised this question in May at our regular town meeting, when this came out then. And I still would, I would like to know that this isn't going to keep happening, that we don't have to keep catching up and correcting an error that's been made in the past. So like, what's happening to prevent this kind of situation to happen in another development? Because we are all hoping that there's going to be further growth and development in our town of various sorts where these kinds of issues may come up again. So that's my question.
So I can answer quickly. So one of the things we did is, one of the mistakes that was made was the issuance of the occupancy permits. And on the special permit application, there was additional steps that were added to the application to ensure that that mistake didn't happen again. Knock on wood, I think we're doing a much better job than back then. But ultimately, you, the residents, are the ones who are going to give us that feedback. I don't see any more of these on the horizon. But I hope that we're past that phase of having to right these wrongs again.
Hi.
Hi, Lineal Lake Conservie, 1394 Main Street. My general comment or question is, the Planning Board puts forth, you know, puts forth the guidelines or requirements, who enforces them so that the occupancy permits don't get issued improperly? There seems to be a piece missing.
So historically, I can, I think I was just talking to somebody about this earlier. So at that time, the request from me or the board, I forget, was reprimanding the individual on the staff. I was told by the Town Administrator at the time that there was a verbal warning or a verbal write-up for this individual. The individual's no longer here. So those were the corrective steps that were taken at that point in time.
But my question is, who is responsible for the enforcement?
The zoning enforcement officer is in charge of enforcing.
And who is that?
Who is that now or then?
Who is, what is the job description? And who is that person presently?
The current building commissioner is Michael Silva. His job description, I couldn't read it for you right now because I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, but we have corrective steps, that that won't happen again, that something won't...
I believe that we have the best people in place townwide to do their jobs.
Well, that would make voters feel a lot better.
Well, then you should feel good.
Okay. And I move the question, so we can vote on it, please.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay.
All those in favor of moving the question? Yes.
I remember at annual town meeting that we couldn't, you couldn't make a statement and then move the question. It had to be, yeah. So procedurally, I just wanted to make sure we did it correctly. I will make a motion to move the vote.
All right, that's...
And you can second that.
Then I move the question.
Okay.
Okay, so now it's been moved by someone different and seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your hand, please. All those opposed to moving the question, it's a unanimous vote. So now we are voting on the acceptance of Hawthorne Lane as a public way. Article seven, it's a two-thirds vote. Mandy, if you could let us know when we're ready to vote. Okay, you can commence voting now. Five seconds, please. We're already at 91 votes, so if there's any last votes to make. If you could stop voting the next five seconds. Okay, let's close voting. Ninety-three votes have been cast. And 60 in favor of accepting the road, 33 opposed. That is a 64 and a half percent, so that falls shy of the 66.66%. So that fails. Okay, Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take Article two off the table and ask for its consideration at this time.
Okay. And maybe I'll ask, it begs the question, why are we asking to take it off the table?
So when we moved to table it prior to, the DPW Commission hadn't had an opportunity to arrive yet. The chair of the DPW Commission is here, they are the sponsor of the article, and I would invite the chair to come forward with any questions. But the article is, and I will make the motion.
Two-thirds.
I move to amend the vote taken under Article four of the May 6, 2024 Annual Town Meeting to appropriate the sum of $1,228,250 from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, as outlined in the warrant. That is what was read before. My motion now is to take it off the table.
Second.
Second, okay. And before we get too far into it, I'm informed that taking it off the table is a simple majority. So is there any discussion on taking it and moving it back on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of moving Article second forward? Okay, those opposed? Unanimous, so we can proceed to discussion. Just announce who you are when you're...
Good evening. My name is Douglas DeCesary. I am the chairperson of the Commission of the Department of Public Works. We're looking for an increase, an $8,412 increase. What it was, when we did our budget, we did not foresee the inflation prices that came in. We're talking about oil, heating oil, supplies. Everyone sees the inflation right down at toilet paper. So what we're looking at is about an $8,000 increase.
Okay. Just if you hold tight in case there's some questions.
Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article two. On this article.
That was, yep, DPW and Select Board, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're ready to proceed to voting. I am gonna try doing this simple by a hand vote, and this is a majority vote. So all those in favor of Article two as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you for coming. Now we are at Article eight.
There needs to be a motion first.
I move that the town pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 15A, transfer the care, custody, jurisdiction, and control of Zero Lunenburg Road rear, Assessor's Parcel 14 through 15, and Zero North Main Street, Assessor's Parcel 19 through 11, from the Select Board to the Lancaster Conservation Commission for open space conservation and passive recreational purposes.
001, not 11.
Apologies, I stand corrected.
Okay. So moved. Or second.
Second. Okay. Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the annual town meeting last May, Article 11 was unanimously approved, and the town formally accepted the pieces of land in North Lancaster that were gifted to the town from the developer. The intent was always to have these lands preserved as open space and conservation property, and this article is the final step to that process whereby the Select Board is asking town meeting to approve the transfer of ownership of these parcels to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. And do we have any from town council? Okay, I was just checking. Yes.
Will there be any deed restrictions placed on this so it will be in perpetuity, like we're doing in an article coming up, that these will formally on the deed be conserved forever?
Yes, but members of the Conservation Commission have changed since then, so they would have to revote that, which I'm sure they will do at their next meeting.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I know I said that we would do hand votes on the ones other than 1, 3, and 7, but since the numbers are dwindling and it's two-thirds vote, we are gonna resort to the clicker, so... Okay, and you can commence voting now. If you could, we seem to be stopping voting, so five seconds to get any last votes in. Okay, and stop voting now. So 75 votes have been cast. I guess I could have done this by show of hands because 74 were in favor of it and one was opposed, so that passes. Article nine, I am told that that is off the, that's not being presented at all.
It is not, no.
Okay. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate $35,000 from Community Preservation Act funds to assist in paying for costs associated with professional land conservation and project management assistance, including legal and recording costs required to complete conservation efforts within certain tax, is that supposed to be tax? Tacts of land comprised of Lancaster Assessor's Parcels. This is the, is this the one that we messed up last time? I just want to make sure I give it, okay, ready, all right. Parcels 24-52, 25-29, 29-1, 29-2, 29-12A, 29-14, 33-18, 33-20, and 33-80, and to which funds shall be expended consistent with the regulations outlined by Lancaster CPA and as overseen by the town administrator or her designee.
Second.
Ms. Hodges.
Through the adoption and funding of the Forest Legacy Program, the town's land trust, Conservation Commission, and forest groups are taking step with consultants to get a permanent conservation restriction over five tacts of land that total the acreage that Chairman Carrigan just talked about. These will become part of the Nashua Wild and Scenic Rivers and Forest Program, funded predominantly by the U.S. Forest Service. The Legacy Program had $125,000 appropriated last town meeting as part of the FY25 Capital Plan. This project was proposed and supported by the Community Preservation Committee last year, but ultimately was put on hold so the town staff could properly follow the procurement and contracting laws. During the summer, the town secured a contract with consultant Janet Morrison with the help of those of the Legacy Project. Then the land conservation consulting will be given to her. This amount, $35, will be used to pay for the costs associated with Mrs. Morrison's professional services and can be outlined here on the parcels in red.
Thank you.
The Select Board recommends affirmative action.
Thank you.
Linnea Lake Conservie, again, 1394 Main Street. I wholeheartedly support this. I urge the people here to approve this. The Forest Legacy Program is a very competitive program, and only five grants for the whole country were given. So this is very, very important to, our own town forest didn't have a conservation restriction on it legally. So this is so important to get done and get done properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Petracca, 67, Woodland Meadow Drive. I just want to encourage my fellow residents to vote for this. It's a huge feather in our cap to get this land into conservation. It's not, these are not sites that would be commercially viable, so we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. It's beautiful, environmentally sensitive land. There were a number of us that worked on this in the town, and we ask for your vote to secure this in conservation and get the money from the federal government to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linnea, again. One question I forgot to ask is the $125,000 that was approved previously, is some of that reimbursable?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
So who's gonna go about doing that?
That goes through...
Oh, good.
Robert Lidstone, 311 Neck Road. I'm president of the Lancaster Land Trust, also the project manager for the Wild and Scenic Program for this effort. And it's correct, the town has already voted for reimbursable expenses. And most of the expenses should be reimbursable if I manage it right. The greasing of wheels that doesn't end up in the end being reimbursable will hopefully be covered by the CPA funds. Again, we never know exactly what's going to be reimbursable until the last minute. And the land trust has agreed to step up in case that $35,000 isn't enough. And so I think we're gonna get this to work. We're gonna have land that people already use as if it's protected, protected. And what has made this possible is that there's a lot of land that the town owned in the Lancaster Blood Town Forest that wasn't technically protected, even though everybody treated it like it was, and everybody wanted it to be. But by transferring that from the town to the Conservation Commission, we get the matching dollars that pulls around a million dollars out of the federal government. And that's a sweet deal. We have to grease the wheels a little bit. It's mostly reimbursable, this is to cover whatever might not be.
Mr. Moderator, I'm assuming that Bob, who's done such great work on the land trust and is my next-door neighbor, doesn't mean to suggest anything nefarious when he says twice in his presentation, "grease the wheels." So I'm very clear that is not what he's suggesting at all.
Wasn't meant to be nefarious.
Indeed.
There's a lot of work to be done.
And he refers to the transfer of the land to the Conservation Commission, which I don't want to blow the surprise, but that's the next article, so...
Yes.
Me again. Regina Brown, 198, Hysory Extension, speaking as a private citizen, but I am on the CPA. I just encourage everyone, what makes Lancaster great is our open space. What makes Lancaster great is we are Lancaster on the Nashua. We need to preserve. We are Lancaster on the Nashua. And that is something we can give to our kids and our kids' kids going forward. So I highly encourage anything that can preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, we're gonna go to a vote then. All those in favor of Article 10 as presented, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you. And Article 11.
I'd like some explanation why Article nine was pulled.
I don't know. I was just informed that it was not.
Sorry, hello? Is this on? Okay. Initially, the CPA had asked for additional funds for administrative oversight, and so that would have been in addition to the budget that was proposed at May's town meeting, but they didn't spend anything from the administrative line item, so they have enough to cover it.
What actually is, that the budget was set at 5%, which is by the law. And if you had asked for 5,000 more, that would put you in violation of Chapter 44, Section 3 through 7, Section 6. And I think that should be made clear.
Okay, but I'm just telling you what the CPA asked for, which is there. But yeah, you're sure.
I move, oh, Mr. Moderators. I move pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40, 15, to transfer the care, custody, jurisdiction, and control of two parcels of land identified as Assessor's Map 28-1 and 28-19, also known and Parcels in Blood Forest, from the Select Board to Lancaster's Conservation Commission, and to instruct the Commission to convey a permanent conservation restriction over said parcels for their perpetual protection.
Second.
Ms. Hodges.
This article seeks to transfer Assessor's Parcel 28-1 and 28-19 with an address of Zero Brockerman Road, which are collectively part of Blood Forest, from Lancaster's Select Board to the town's Conservation Commission. The parcels are seen on this map, are outlined in green, and the fees associated with the transfer are being funded by Lancaster's Land Trust. The transfer to take place to ensure that the groups are able to pursue permanent and perpetual restrictions on the properties. This action is part of the Forest Legacy Project, which was just spoken about as Article 10. The Lancaster Conservation Commission and the members of the Select Board recommend affirmative action.
Thank you. Discussion. This does require a two-thirds vote, but given again while our numbers are dwindling in the last votes, I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. All those in favor of Article 11 as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Unanimous. Yes.
I was gonna make a motion to adjourn, but I don't know what the...
Okay, I'm gonna ask, is there any other business to come before the meeting? But I see somebody at the podium. Yes, sir.
Carl Merwin, 60 Hawthorne Lane. I would like a motion to reconsider Article seven.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and second to...
Reconsider.
Simple majority. Hold on a second. Chris.
Can you turn on Bill's mic?
Thank you. Okay, so I was just checking with town council that this would be a majority vote. Okay, so I was just checking with town council that this would be a majority vote, so now we'll ask for a discussion, so yes, go right ahead.
First of all, I'm sorry to extend the meeting any farther. I know a lot of us want to go home, but as a member or resident of 60 Hawthorne, Hawthorne Lane, as you all unanimously voted on Article 4, I feel like not accepting this as a public way is kind of punishing us for the builder and not the residents who live on this street. There is no major asks from the Select Board on this. Those lists of 1, 2, 3, and 4 are just what have to happen legally because the builder did not put those things in place correctly for us to have our road accepted. So these are just things, clerical errors, and I think we all should relook at this and really, we have residents that are teachers, first responders, like, we are part of your community, and I think we all went in here really wanting to live here in Lancaster, and we've, unfortunately, we've made very clear to the Select Board, have felt very rejected from the community, the way we've been treated, and kind of blamed for everything that the builder has done. So I hope you'd reconsider.
Next, please.
Jonathan Roper, 5 Turner Lane. We live on a private road. I don't think it would be accepted because it isn't built to specs. So we have to take care of it ourselves, and we pay $70 a month. However, $70 a month also is significantly, that, the portion of that, about 80%, is because we have a swimming area and the insurance is very expensive, and we have to run a pump for the, so taking care of the road probably costs us about $20 a month each. And it'd be nice if the town took it over, but it isn't that big a deal, and from what I'm hearing, maintenance on Hawthorne Lane probably isn't a great deal. So they could have a homeowners association, which is what we have, and pay for it that way. I understand the builder messed up, but I still don't think we're talking about a huge amount of money for the homeowners to pay. I suspect the homes are relatively expensive, and I don't think they'd be paying that much for maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yeah, hi, Rob Parda, 41 Hawthorne Lane. There's a lot of misconceptions about the neighborhood. I've heard some people in the audience, I've heard it from some of the boards before. So I just want everybody to know that I think the lady from Eagle Ridge would appreciate this as well. The way the town works is, you know, when anybody builds a development, they get a certificate of approval of a definitive subdivision plan from the planning board, and that outlines everything. That outlines how the road is going to be built, the town's standards, and so forth. And if you were to read the document, which is online, you'll see that nowhere in that approval does it ever talk about a private road. As a matter of fact, specifically in Section 13, I won't go through all the buildings, but it says, "blah, blah, blah, shall it obtain town acceptance of roadways and necessary utilities." Item 15 says, "Until such time as ownership of parcels and subdivision improvements are accepted by the town." Never is the word "private." This was always built to specs and meant to be accepted by the town. Now, that doesn't mean the town has to do it, right? It has to meet the specifications, which it does. It has to be approved by the DPW, which it has been. And of course, the way the town, roads get voted in the town of Lancaster, they have to be accepted by, you know, your neighbors. Okay, so there's nothing here where, you know, we bought into a private road, and now we got taxes, and we want to pass the bill on to the town. I mean, that's not what it was. It was always intended to be public. It's been built to all the specifications that are laid out in town, and because of many failures by the developer, obviously, and by some of our paid professionals, our building inspector, our town planner at the time, they all failed miserably at following up on the definitive subdivision, you know, actions. So that's why we're here we're at. So as fellow neighbors, we hope you'll approve it. Thanks.
Sir.
Dennis Hubbard, 258 Grant Way. Move to question.
There was a lot of clapping.
Dennis Hubbard, 258 Grant Way. Move the question.
Move the question, thank you. There are second? All in favor of moving the question? Okay, those opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so as far as the question itself, now it seems that we are back on for...
Article 7.
Thank you. Article 7, so I will revisit...
Oh, that was moving the question.
Thank you. So the, now we'll have a vote to reconsider. That was moving the question, so now we'll have a motion to reconsider. Those in favor of reconsidering Article 7, please raise your right hand, or your any hand, I don't know. Okay? Those opposed? Can we get this queued up? Too close for me to determine.
Simple majority.
Majority. Good. Okay, those in favor of, well, please cast your vote. A yes vote would be to reconsider the article and bring it back before the audit tonight. No would be to, not to bring it back. So please commence voting. We have the highest number of votes cast of any vote this evening, so a lot of people seem to have arrived. So please cast your vote in the next five seconds. Okay, and stop voting now. So of 105 votes tonight, that's by far the largest number of votes. 69 are in favor of bringing the article back before the board, and this is a simple majority? Yes, I am, okay, simple majority. So that passes. Now we're going to go back to Article 7, and we'll have discussion. Yes, sir.
Moderator, Tom Seidenberg, 748 George Hill Road. I move to amend Article 7 by striking paragraph 1.
Okay, so has it been seconded? Okay, so perhaps you could explain what that is.
So I move to strike paragraph 1 because it seems to me that the largest reason to oppose this article is the acceptance of the roadway. I believe that there's other benefits. I personally would like to accept the roadway, but it seems clear to me that town meeting today does not want to accept the roadway despite the vote at the previous meeting. Nevertheless, I see benefits to the other paragraphs in this article, and I think that town meeting should reconsider those. Thank you.
Yes.
Unfortunately, while I understand the intent, we, the town, would not be able to get an easement over Lot 10 or the easement for the drainage over the open space without accepting the road. So getting rid of one gets rid of a few others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, yes.
Erin Smith, 62 Hawthorne Lane. I can't fathom why so many people are against this road being accepted, and to echo my...
Ma'am, I'm gonna, I appreciate your comment, but it's been moved and seconded just on the amendment. So could you keep this comment for the amendment? I realize you're probably going to back in line depending on this vote, but...
Okay.
But you have something on the amendment that essentially is taking subsection 1 and deleting that from Article 7 as presented in the warrant.
I, I guess I, I just agree with Kate because it doesn't make any sense to not accept the roadway if you're going to take all the rest.
Okay.
Douglas DeCesare, 198 High Street Extension. Can we end up the discussion, move to vote?
You, you want to end discussion?
And move to vote.
Okay.
Second.
So this, okay. All those in favor of ending discussion and proceed to vote, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, then that, that clearly passes. So now we're going to vote on the amendment that is to strike...
Section 1.
Section 1. And could somebody, just so that we're going to kill it, deleting section 1, what is that essentially going to do?
So we didn't, section 1 would also, well, it would...
So that's not, not accepting the road?
Yeah, it would not allow us to accept this 3 here, and, and a portion of this, which was easement, so it, it will affect...
Okay, well, you described that then. Thank you.
Okay, to answer the question, the removal of 1 also removes 3 and would remove a portion of 4, as we are also interested in getting an easement across the open space for drainage from the roadway.
Okay. Does that make it clear to anybody that, what you're voting on?
Oh, I see. So this is on the amendment? So if you vote yes on the amendment, then Article 7 would be without number 1 and number 3, and there would be an edit to number 4, which would take out the easement over the open space for drainage. If no, if you vote no, it remains as written in the warrant.
Then we'll vote on it.
Yes.
Yes.
And then you vote.
Yes. Okay, so those in favor of the amendment, excuse me, the amendment to Article 7, please raise your hand. Okay, see, up and down, so once again, I'm going to ask, those in favor of the article as amended, the amendment to Article 7, please raise your hand. Okay, those opposed? Okay, clearly that, that fails. So now we're back to the original article. Now, as I think you want to, you were in line. So this is debate on Article 7.
Erin Smith, 62 Hawthorne Lane. I would first of all like to thank the Select Board for trying to fix the mess that us residents unknowingly stepped into. They have put a lot of time, effort, energy, you name it, into trying to fix the problems that existed prior to their arrival and prior to my neighbors and I's purchase of our properties. We honestly did everything we could as a normal homeowner, homeowner would, prior to purchasing our properties, to feel that everything was in line. Our attorney said everything was in line. After we all got our occupancy permits, that's when things started to fall through the cracks. From there, it just kind of felt like everybody was against us. We've been climbing up a mountain that never seemed like it was going to end. And thankfully, things kind of shifted around. We kindly, finally got our small number of voices heard that, you know, there are people on our road that at any given time, we could require assistance from our first responders, and our road wasn't properly being cared for. Again, like stated, it's kind of a de minimis road, so we can't understand why it's, there's such resistance to it. Everybody wants the open space, which is great, everybody just voted on all of that. So I don't know why we wouldn't just take the road with it and why continue to try and punish the residents on the roadway who, by no fault of their own, ended up in a mess that was created by other people. So I'd really appreciate if you would vote to accept the Article 7 as the way it stands to, to right a lot of wrongs that we can't do on our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeCesare.
Yes. I would like to end it, I can't talk, I apologize. End the discussion and move to vote, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of ending debate and proceed to a vote, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Unanimous. Okay, so now we're going to, Mandy, can you get that queued up again for clicker vote? This is a two-thirds vote, so we are voting on the acceptance of Hawthorne Lane, and you can commence voting now. Okay, the numbers seem to be slowing on voting, so if you could vote in the next five seconds. Okay, and stop voting now. Sorry. Okay, so 104 votes were cast, 81 in favor, 23 opposed, so that... That is 77.88% in favor.
Mr. Moderator, move we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor of adjourning, terminating, thank you, clearly passes.